Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Town Council meeting for our August 21 Chrizal Rise. Pledge of allegiance. Councillor?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the world.
Counselor. Here. Councillor Calhoun, present. Councillor Christopher?
Yes.
Councillor Thierry?
Here.
Councillor Sordo?
Here.
Councillor McDuffie?
Present.
President. Vice-President Van Curi?
President.
I want to take a motion to accept the minutes of the August 8 meeting.
I need to abstain.
Okay. Do we hear a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All oppose? Any abstentions? One extension?
No.
Okay. All right. First item is a public hearing for a transfer of $60,000 to provide funding to the Belle Isle Marsh construction project. Joe, could you just give us a background on that?
Yep. Thanks. You know, when this budget got put, when this project got approved, then the budget got approved. It was not approved with a contingency budget. We knew that there might be some minor things that we would run into, particularly on the DCR property. We knew that that had been landfill and stuff had been dumped in there every year. But for various reasons, DCR didn't want us to test the ground, so we kind of took a chance and put it forward without a contingency budget. There was some internal debate about whether or not to do that, but the thought was, let's ask for what we need and hope that we get lucky. We didn't get lucky. We had a couple of things pop up, particularly in that site and the site over by where the RPM parking lot is. There was some material that had been dumped in there, caused some breaking of shafts and things like that. So that stuff started to drive the cost up. We worked very hard, Steve can attest to it, we worked very hard with the contractor to bring things down. In other areas, we tried to contain the costs within the budget, found other ways to bring other costs in line, but we are left with about, I think all told, around $59,000 in slight overages. If we had gone forward with a 5% contingency budget, we would be under budget, but because we didn't have a contingency, we missed the mark a little bit.
Thank you, Joe. Any questions from the councils? I'll open for comments, public comments, questions?
Any on that particular subject or any?
Yes. No, on that particular subject. Hearing none, I'll close out the public hearing. Next item on the agenda is a grants update by our Assistant Town Manager, Joe. Joe, you have the show tonight.
Okay. Give me a little early tonight, Ken. I gave you a memo, copy of memo. I don't want to make this longer than it needs to be here. This year so far, we've had five big grant announcements, the grants that came to the town. A Complete Streets Award for $261,000, an MPP Action Grant for feasibility study on Ingleside Park for improvements to drainage in that area, a Green Communities Award of $247,000, a CZM Coastal Resilience Grant Award, this is construction money to construct the solution for the Coffin Park shoreline, and a DCR recreational trails grant award. This will be an adjunct to the Belle Isle Marsh project, this will help us develop educational signage and wayfinding signage for that project. All told, the five grants that we've received brought about $895,710 into the town in the last six or eight months. We also just added to this, not awarded yet, but we did apply to Mass last week for $46,800 grant toward the cost of a new senior center van. The Friends of the Council on Aging has pledged to provide the match for that, so if we get the grant award, the $11,700 won't have to come from town funds, it'll come from the Friends of the Council on Aging. Just a real important thing to say on this, all grants are group efforts. You know, with the Complete Streets Grant, we had the services of a consultant, but we also had the transportation advisory committee and the traffic safety advisory committee to make recommendations on things that went into that Complete Streets application. The MPP Action Grant and the CZM Coastal Resilience Grant were largely written by Water and Current. They're very technical brands for foreign engineering and scientific analysis, and that company provided all of that. The Green Communities Award couldn't have been written without the help of Frank Nitti and the recreational trails grant was written with the help of the Friends of Belle Isle Marsh. So, you know, all told, all these things happen with group efforts, so it's everybody's help that got us through that funding.
Questions from the councils? Comments? No. Thank you, Joe, for all your service, and most of you may know that Joe is leaving us at the end of this month. He's taking over the position of Town Manager in the town of Hamilton. So, Joe, as I said before, we wish you the very best. Thank you for all of the cash you got over the last couple of years for the town. You're talking a couple of million dollars at least. So, thank you for your service, Joe.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a ferry update. Tanji?
Yes.
Sepudi, where are you?
I'm right here.
Okay.
Hope everyone is well. I sent you all the PowerPoint presentation earlier in the day, and I don't know if anyone got some time to look at it.
I did.
Do you want me just to run through the slides real quickly, or, I don't know how, yeah, is that okay?
Is that hooked up up there? Is it hooked up?
I sent it to Michael Cabral. I can't, you have it, okay, so I did. If you want to put it up there. Okay. Okay, so basically, just to go over this real briefly, I just wanted to describe on the first slide how this actually works when it comes to the ferry operations. So, I just described the fact that obviously, as you all know, our fiscal year begins July 1st and ends June 30th of every calendar year. Our ferry season begins mid-April and ends November 30th of every year, of the same calendar year. So, when you start a ferry season, it's at the end of one fiscal year and it carries over to another fiscal year. So, it's a little confusing on, when you look at actually spreadsheets, because you're looking at two different fiscal years for one season, okay? But I just wanted to describe that all to you. So, currently, we're in our fourth fiscal year for the ferry, but we're in our third season, okay? So, that was the first slide. The second slide, basically, I just wanted to show you the total number of passengers per season. So, for the first season, we had 12,562 passengers. Second season, we have 11,899 passengers. And currently, I should say as of July 31, 2018, we have 10,108 passengers. So, we are doing very well this year. The next slide basically shows how many passengers per fiscal year. So, the first fiscal year, we had 2,295. Second fiscal year, 12,652. Third fiscal year, 14,745 passengers. And currently, for the fourth fiscal year, which just started July 1st and ended July 30th, these figures are July 31st, we serviced 4,877 passengers in the one month of our first fiscal year. The next slide, basically, I just wanted to show you the trend of what season three has looked like. So, when I did this presentation, I did it starting mid-April, which was our first week, and I ran it for 14 weeks through July 31st. And as you can see, it's been an uphill trend. Our tickets, we just keep increasing every week. There were, on week 13, there were two days that our ferry vessel was down, and that's why our numbers are down for week 13. We had an issue with the engine, but we were able to turn that around in two days. So, that's why there's a little bit of drop, but we were able to recoup for week 14. And we're actually having a really strong month of August, so we have really great events happening at the end of the month, that I'm hoping that it will generate even more revenue for us. The next slide is a snapshot of 2000, or I should say our fiscal year 2018 summary revenue expense report. And I don't want to go through this line by line, but I just wanted to show you all where we ended off on our expenses and where we ended off on our revenue. And the most important number out of these two pages, there's two slides, is the ending number, the end and balance number. So, for fiscal year three, we had a $90,536 that we were in the black. So, obviously, free cash won't be certified until mid-September, so that would be a $90,536 certified retained earnings, right? But I don't think that happens till mid-September. So, I mean, we do run this boat extremely efficiently. We run it like it's our own personal businesses, and it's so fortunate to have Ernie Sardillo, who is very well versed in all of this stuff, so we did a lot of our maintenance for us, and he has exceptional relationships with everybody on the waterfront, which totally helps us. We also have an excellent crew. We have excellent rating on Facebook, almost five stars all the time, because we always show up on time, hardly ever late, taking off or getting anywhere, so we have a lot of return customers. We've noticed this year, we've had a big influx in our commuters, because we've dropped the rate from $8.50 to $6 during commuting hours, going outbound and coming back in, and that's really helped. We plan on spending $10,000, some of the money that we'll be receiving from Mass Department of Transportation to do a big marketing push in the spring, so we're going to allocate $10,000 of the $160,000 we're getting to just put towards the marketing. The city of Quincy just spent about $15,000 on marketing, so if you go on the red line, you'll see a bunch of signage for our ferry, along with their bus lines and their bus stations, to push it, because they have a couple of bus stations going down, so they're trying to get everybody to use the ferry instead. So, we should see an influx in the next few months. The next slide, basically, I just wanted to let everybody know where we stand with our subsidies. So, to start off, this year, we're expecting another $150,000 from the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. This is for servicing the Seaboard District. This is not a subsidy that's funded with taxpayers' money. This is funded by the private developers who build along the Seaboard. It's part of their mitigation package. They have to put money every year into this account, and that money is pulled, well, there's obviously a principle that is made, and they pull from that and they support our ferry, because we fall within that equation, because we service the Seaboard along the waterfront. Currently, right now, we're the only vessel that does that. So, we asked for the 150 by just proving that we actually are operating a vessel, and how many people we have going on from Seaboard to Boston, and last year, they subsidized us for 150, and that will continue as long as the developers keep putting money in. So, we know that is going to happen, we know that there's millions in there, so that's a definite, but not subsidized by taxpayers' money, I just want to make that clear. Mass Department of Transportation subsidizes us 161, I think I said 160 a couple of minutes ago, 161. We signed a contract with them, and that's for servicing Winthrop, Quincy to Boston. So, right there, the total of 311,000 in subsidies. We do have the $90,000 in retained earnings that we hope will be certified in mid-September of 2018. Last year, we had the 150 from DEP, and we received 75,000 from Mass Department of Transportation. So, we upped that to 118,000 share from 75,000. We also had an appropriation from the town of 100,000. That was the last increment of the 300,000 that the Town Council had agreed on three years ago. We were going to appropriate 100 for three years. That ended last year, that's no longer happening. So, last year, we did have subsidies of 325,000. This year, we have subsidies of 311,000, and hopefully, we keep the 90,000 that have been retained earnings, and we'll be in a very comfortable spot for subsidies. And with the next slide, our goal for ticket revenue this year is $160,000 in ticket sales. So, currently, right now, by the end of August, we should be at $60,000 worth of ticket sales. That doesn't include charters. In the fall, our goal is to bring in $50,000, and that would be for the month of September, October, and November. In the spring, when we start up in mid-April, we would have April, May, to the end of June, we'll bring in another $50,000, which is what we usually do every spring, we roughly are at that point. So, that would bring in about, so that's how we'll be able to get to our $160,000 ticket sales. So, with that, if we are able to bring that in, and with your subsidies, right now, I think we budgeted in our budget $420,000 for all of the operating costs, we should be able to have a big of about $50,000 to $60,000 in pocket. Okay? Does anybody have any?
Any questions from the councils?
Yes. Do we have any idea, I know Quincy is sort of thinking, I know it's sort of like a temporary thing, because the red line is sort of in flux right now, they're doing instruction or something?
Yeah.
Is that scheduled to take, to end next year or the year after?
So, one of their stations is currently down. The other one was supposed to shut down right after.
Yes.
It hasn't. So, it doesn't look like that one's going to be shutting down until next year. So, we know for at least two years that we will be still partnering with them. Now, they are trying to attempt to receive money to get their own, to purchase their own boat. If they are successful, then that would be another couple of years, because by the time that you have the design of it and you spec it out and you find the builder and the builder that builds the boat, you're talking another couple of years, that's basically how long it took for us. So, we, I can foresee a relationship with them for the next three to four years. I can tell you that I have a conversation with the Massachusetts Department of Transportation on a weekly basis and the city of Quincy. They're actually supposed to be in town tomorrow, they're going to be here in person, but we have a conference call every week, and they are extremely happy with our numbers. I think we've been extremely creative on not just targeting the commuters, but also targeting recreational. We've had a number of different events at nighttime, both in the Seaboard, Quincy, and Winthrop, and we've done very well with those. So, we're just going to continue to be, to be really good partners with Quincy, along with the city of Boston, because they've all been really good to us, and it's working, so.
Anyone else?
Yes.
So, first, just commentary, I've been really enjoying seeing the ferry numbers come in. Clearly, we've been thinking outside the box on how this is actually going to work, which is, which is great, and I know the private bookings are going well, because I got invited to one tonight, but I'm here instead. So, that said, I'm looking at some of these numbers here, and everyone's always talking about the investment that comes out of the general fund. So, when we say we're 90 in the black, quote unquote, but that is with 100,000 that came out of the general fund, which we would do anyway to get a fledgling project like the ferry off the ground, but really, the number that so many taxpayers are concerned about as far as what the town invested into this in this last year is really $10,000.
Correct.
Okay. That's, that's all I wanted to state, so that people can actually see what the real investment is in the town, coming from the general fund to make it happen.
Right. And I also want to, I just also want to put out there too, that we have a good 25 to 40 commuters that use it every morning out of Winthrop, devoted commuters, that's 25 to 40 cars that are off our roads every morning, so that is a positive thing. And we have, I mean, if you speak to all of our local inns, I mean, all of those people, international passengers on our boat all the time, staying in our inns, in our town, so it's great economic development as well.
Very good, Tino.
Yep.
Great job. Public comment?
Anything?
Anything.
Anything.
You've got three minutes.
Okay. I was thinking, this is for the Capobasso, Mothers Out Front.
You're going to do a duet?
Pardon?
Is this a duet?
It's a duet! Yes.
So, you have six minutes.
Only one has said so. Very first off, we would like to welcome our new Town Manager, Faisal, and we're just thrilled to have you here. I lived in Brookline for 19 years, and I am just thrilled personally to have you here.
Thank you.
I'd also like to mention one thing, that the US House just passed an SOS, build the house, save our seas, and it deals with plastic debris, and I will pass it over to Karina.
Yes, we're all very concerned about plastic debris, and we are on, Mothers Out Front is on, as I understand it, the agenda for September 18th regarding the plastic bag ban that we talked about a few meetings ago. And we're just here tonight to remind you that we're still here, and say that we want to work with you all, and also, I see that Mark Wallace is here tonight, and we're going to want to work with the businesses that are going to be impacted by a ban if it passes, and make sure that, you know, it will work for the businesses as well as, you know, everyone in terms of advertising, making sure people bring their reusable bags, et cetera. So, we were just here to say hi and tell you that we're still around.
We're still here.
And by the way, I'm also with Friends of Belle Isle Marsh, which is also supporting the plastic bag ban, so, thank you.
With grants to give some reusable bags as well.
Yes, yes, and Belle Isle Marsh Friends has committed some money to buy some reusable bags that we can maybe give to Mr. Wallace or, you know, and some other businesses. I mean, it won't cover everything, but if we can get people into the habit of bringing their bags, we can have, you know, our beautiful town will be even more beautiful with no plastic.
Okay. And the last thing, Mothers Out Front, my T-shirt, mobilizing for a livable climate. So, we are very concerned about fossil fuels, we need to transition off, but in the meantime, we're very concerned about nat-, quote, natural gas or fracked gas leaks, and we would like to express our support to the National Grid, extremely skilled workers who have been locked out, and we need their expertise and skill to help keep our neighborhoods safe.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to be heard? Yes, sir?
Hi. Good evening.
State your name, please.
My name is Ron O'Leal.
And your address?
I am a resident of Everett, Massachusetts.
Okay, we'll have to get permission?
I'll give him permission.
Okay.
Thank you.
Receive permission.
Thank you, sir. I'm a representative of Local 12012-4, the United Steelworkers. I'm a voluntary union representative, elected by my members of my local. My full-time job is with National Grid as a working leader in the construction and maintenance department. Also here with me tonight are members of our local who not only service your gas system, but are your fellow Winthrop residents as well. We are some of the, over the 1,200 gas workers currently locked out by, out of work by National Grid. The members of our union are highly trained, skilled, and have years of on-the-job experience. They provide a level of service to our community that is not driven by any motivation other than safety. We do not get paid by the foot or by the job. Over the last few years, National Grid has flooded the cities and towns with subcontractors to perform new and replacement gas line projects. These contractors need oversight. We have members whose job titles is gas contractor inspectors. Their function is to monitor what these contractors are doing and inspect their work in making sure that they follow all proper procedures. These union inspectors are currently locked out of work by National Grid. There are also management employees who have similar responsibilities, but they are currently being used as replacement workers to field the gas leak emergency calls. We've been monitored in the work that the replacement workers are doing. To date, we have reported over 30 unsafe in what we believe to be hazardous conditions to the Department of Public Utilities. Along with the written complaints, we have sent pictures and videos to support each one. If any members of the board wish to see these, we can provide them along with testimony from those who witnessed these events. Many of the issues arise due to the inexperience of the people that National Grid is using to replace us while they have locked us out of work. People that have no hands-on experience, even worse, people with no gas experience at all. The company has literally pulled people from office jobs, given them a bare minimum training, a quick test, and then sent them out on your roads. Our people take their, our people take their jobs very serious. Natural gas is a dangerous product, and needs to be handled with the utmost expertise and care. We don't think it is in the best interest of public safety to allow these gas line projects to occur while National Grid has their 1,200 highly skilled and experienced people locked out not performing this work. We do not believe National Grid will be able to provide proper oversight to make certain that these projects are being completed correctly, and most importantly, that public safety is not compromised. We're asking all the cities and towns in National Grid operating territory to implement a moratorium on new air replacement gas line projects until the lockout is over and our experienced employees are back on the job sites. Thus far, several cities and towns have passed these moratoriums, such as Braintree, Mallow, Havre, Medford, Revere, Somerville, Abington, Milton, Drakot, Weyman, Lowell, Quincy, Mary Mac, Everett, Cambridge, Arlington, and Stoneham. Melrose have all passed such resolutions for the protection of their residents. There are also a number of cities and towns working, working towards passing the resolution. Thank you for the opportunity to allow us to share our concerns.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Hi, Joe. My name is Joe. I'm in Precinct 3. I also work for National Grid, and also a father of three kids and a grandson that live in town. I'm not going to, I told you well enough of what's going on with National Grid, but it is true. They have no oversight, these contractors have no oversight right now. There was a job, I'll give you this, a job yesterday in Pleasant Street, where they had the street closed off. They're driving into town with unsecured loads, plates, metal plates that weigh about 1,500 pounds on top of sand piles in the back of trucks, which should be secured down, and when you take that right going onto Pleasant from Maine, if that plate were to come off, it's going to kill somebody. These are just minor things, these are just minor things, not including the gas work that nobody's keeping an eye on with National Grid. Someone's going to get hurt. It makes me nervous. I know what they're doing wrong. Like you said, there is video evidence in National Grid. If nobody's watching them, who is? That's all I'm going to say.
Anyone else wish to be heard?
My name is Josh Brody. I'm a resident in Precinct 3. I'm a steelworker. I cover Winthrop, I covered Winthrop and Revere on the weekends for gas emergencies before I was locked out. Just wanted to give you an experience that I've had on this job. Several months back, I was in Winthrop. Every day I drive to work, I notice customers' meter that need to be changed. So, I would see the meter every single day. So, one day, I was in Winthrop working, and I saw the customer outside. I asked him if I could change his gas meter. So, he said, yeah. So, I get up, I change the customer's meter. Now, I knew there was a problem right away. It smelled like gas outside, it smelled like, and I asked the customer, I go, have you ever smelled gas before? Oh, yeah, sometimes I've smelled gas, okay? Did you ever call the gas company? No. He thought there was a problem with one of his appliances inside, he called an appliance repair shop, he never called the gas company. So, this customer had a heart condition, he was in and out of the hospital, he had gas leaking in the wall of his house. It could, if he was in the hospital for more than he set him up, he could have had gas just filling up in his house, and we found the problem right there. So, it's really important. These guys on the job right now, they're from offices, and they don't, the important part of this job is hands-on training. When we stopped this company, you know, some of us were driving around with a tech for a year and a half to two years before we were out on our own. These guys are in an office and they're being thrown out there.
Anyone else wish to be heard?
Tino Capobianco, Precinct 3. First, I just want to thank Joe Dee for his years of service, he's done a great job in the town, always very accessible. As Chairman of the School Committee, I'm extremely concerned about this public safety issue. Another of our students will be walking to school soon. I know the town has made a lot of investments with biking, another of us will be biking to school, and the fact that some of these underqualified, undertrained workers might be fixing a potential gas leak is just extremely, extremely concerning to me. Also, from a moral standpoint, I think we're at a time in our country right now, we need to stand together and stand with our neighbors, and stand with working people who are being locked out of a job, who are just trying to provide for their family. So, I'm hoping that a member of the council tonight will make a motion to remove our this moratorium by our committee and take a vote out and pass it tonight. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to be heard? Okay. Correspondence, we have none. Committee reports. Capital assets, I think you had a meeting that was supposed to hold?
Yes.
Okay.
We worked through schedule.
Okay. Finance. Councillor Christopher?
Yes.
Chair is not. Chair is not here, so I think you're still here.
So, yes, the finance committee met last Thursday. We had four items on our agenda. The first one was $3.5,000 that was supposed to go towards keeping the, to opening up the Miller Field for the community. We, and this was amended to 3.6,000, 3,600, I'm gonna say it that way, it's a little bit easier. We accepted that amendment unanimously, and then we passed the whole amendment. I think it's, with the committee discussed this for a while, but we wanted to, we felt that the amount of money will allow the town to carry out the vision throughout the fall that the people voted on to open the field up to the community. We also talked a little bit about the future of the field and how it's gonna be controlled with the schools and us, and we hope to have a conversation about a long-term plan with, for the, for the field. We voted two to zero to appropriate that money to continue the, to keep the field open to the community. We also took up the $60,000 appropriation for the Belle Isle Marsh project that Joe D. had talked about earlier, and he explained a little bit. The committee was a little bit perturbed that the bill had already come due. However, given the realities of the situation, we decided that we need to pay the bills, and we voted in favor of the appropriation, two to nothing. Parks and Rec was also on the agenda, but Sean had told us that he wasn't gonna be able to make it, so he'll be coming to our next meeting, and we're gonna keep that item on the agenda. We also received a one-year-old letter from the voc, from the voc, asking us to approve a salary reserve account, which I think we all think is a good thing, but we, we were a little bit, we questioned why it was coming to us a year later, so we asked to have a representative of the voc school come. So, apparently, I guess what happens is the voc needs to get approval from every community in order to create one of these salary reserves, and I think in principle, we all agree with it, but we just wanted to get some more detail, so we're gonna ask somebody from the voc to come and, and speak about it before we make a motion to pass it. We adjourned the meeting about 45 minutes after it started.
Okay, thank you. And there's no Miller Field committee meeting tonight? Report, town manager's report.
Happy to be speaking for once.
Welcome.
Thank you. All right, so, had an apartment head meeting yesterday. Few things to run through. The Belle Isle Marsh Marine Ecology Park and Walking Pathway Ribbon Cutting is this coming Monday at 1:45 PM at the Morton Street entrance. Joe was actually just over there today looking at it. Some of the things, the pathway is looking good and stuff like that, so it's gonna be a good day. Some of the representatives from different levels of government coming are very excited for it. We have the lieutenant governor, speaker, and also our local senator, so it's gonna be a good event on Monday. Next is milling work on Revere Street is scheduled for Sunday. Specific times will be announced later this week, and that will be on our website. The United States Coast Guard along with FEMA will be conducting on-the-water training exercises starting today through Thursday off of Deer Island and the pier, and as part of this training, a Coast Guard helicopter will be landing on MW, NRA Pier today, so you may have seen it. Street sweeping is next week, and the state primary election will be held the day after Labor Day on September 4th, which we will not be having a council meeting on that date. And I'm skipping ahead a tiny bit on the agenda. September 11th is the Marijuana Forum, and then September 18th will resume regular business. And that is all. Thank you.
Joe, sorry to do this out of order, I'm sorry to be lost, and I should have made sure that the town manager is aware that the ribbon cutting event on the 27th will also be an opportunity for the town to recognize Mary Kelly and her 46 years of service to the Conservation Commission. Thanks to the DCR Commissioner Roy, the town is being allowed to name the pavilion after Mary Kelly. The Conservation Commission will be unveiling a sign naming the pavilion, Mary A. Kelly Pavilion, at the event as well. So, the park will open and the pavilion will be officially named, so that's, just, I want to make sure people are aware of that.
Thanks, Joe. No worries.
School Department update. That's me. My notes. We had a meeting last night. There was an extensive discussion about the possibility, or actually, there's a, there's a plan to put solar panels on the Winthrop High School and Middle School. Frank Nitti, who's in charge of our solar, I guess, he brought in a company that is willing to do the work. It's, it's a, a program that's gonna last 20 years. They come in and they actually put up all of the panels and so forth. There were many, many questions of the, of the members of the school committee in terms of the lease agreement. There wasn't any escalating clause, so there's no cost increases over the 20-year period. And I guess, David, you had some discussion with them regarding this, this, this plan, according to Mr. Nitti?
Yes.
And we, the suggestion was made, I actually made a suggestion, that for our next meeting, the next school committee meeting, that may be between you and, and obviously Austin, that you sit with the representative of this company that wants to come in and give us a recommendation. There were some questions whether or not that the, you know, this lease agreement was tight, you know, that there were any loopholes in it. I guess KP looked at it and kept adding to it and so forth. So, there's, there's a big interest in doing this, but we wanna make sure that we do it the right way.
Sure.
And the last time we looked at it, it wasn't the right time as far as the school committee. We looked at it about right as the school opened, and it wasn't the time, it wasn't the program. This, this has a lot of merit, this program, but we just wanna get some protection from the town, so they're gonna ask you. What else? Lori Gallivan is the executive director of curriculum and instruction accountability. She was introduced at the meeting. We got to meet with her. She gave us kind of top-line some of her goals and objectives for the year. The leadership team has been working very hard developing a new strategic plan for the district. Schools opening in a, in a couple of weeks, they're quite excited. You know, there's always been a discussion about the care of facilities in the town. Through the years, people have criticized town government for not taking care of the buildings. Well, they've, they've really stepped up. The school department over the last couple of years has been doing a good job with the facilities director and, you know, the custodial staff, and they've actually come up with a list of, of a five-page list of, of things that they instituted over the last year to make the school, you know, the buildings last longer and so forth. So, it's, they're kind of proud of it, and the superintendent mentioned it. That's about it, as far as the school department. Okay, under old business, I'm gonna take the first two items off of there because they're in committee. That's to direct the town manager to provide reports, DBW maintenance schedule twice annually, and obviously, the establishment of a capital asset plan. That's in committee, so we won't be discussing those tonight. We took a vote last meeting about the surplus old school buses, and I understand that we have to withdraw that, but that has to be withdrawn from, by Jim because he made the motion, and there is a new motion that I would like to make this evening, if I can find it. Do you have it? We just have to amend this thing. All right, so, I'm gonna make a motion, this is submitted by the town manager. I move that the town council vote to exercise their right on the Massachusetts General Law Chapter 30D, Section 15. It's about the disposition of vehicles. And there are three vehicles in question. School bus, a 2011 school bus, Thomas School Bus, VIN number is 4UZABRDUObCX8360. School bus, 2012 Thomas School Bus, the VIN number is 1T7R2E22C1145783. And the last school bus is a 2014 Freightliner School Bus, VIN number is 4UZABRDU4ECFF6201. Do I hear a second on the motion?
If you're making it.
Oh.
Is there a second on the motion?
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion, does this have to go to committee?
I don't believe so.
This is the first time it's been brought.
Just the language changed.
It's just the language change.
Okay, it's something that we had before us.
Yes.
All right, this is the amendment. All right, any discussion on the issue? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, voting to vote, motion passes.
The next item is to transfer $60,000 to provide funding to the Belle Isle Marsh Construction Project. This is out of finance, I understand this is, came out favorable?
Yep.
So, it doesn't need a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote.
Councilor Inghman?
Yes.
Councilor Callow?
Yes.
Councilor Christopher?
Yes.
Councilor Terry?
Yes.
Councilor Serto?
Yes.
Councilor McDuffie?
Yes.
Vice President Boncory?
Yes.
President Beckham?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Appropriate $3,600 for public access of Miller Field. Again, this is out of finance, does not need a second. Does anybody wish to be heard on the motion? Hearing none, we don't need a roll call on this. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? The ayes have it. Parks and Rec, we're gonna refer. Regional School District Stabilization Fund, we're gonna refer. Petition to purchase town land at 413, 415 Shirley Street. We were looking for more information from the petitioner, were we not?
I have been in contact with the petitioner, and we just about have all the information we need, so, it's up to you if you wanna wait till the 18th to vote on it officially, or you wanna just authorize us to go forward and, and sell it.
Anybody wish to be heard?
I think this, the last meeting, this was discussed.
This is, the theater on Shirley Street across from the firehouse, no railroad right away behind it on Veterans Road. I guess the owners of, of that project wanna purchase that land from the town. That's basically in a nutshell.
Councilor President, at the last time we discussed this, it was said that the town manager has the sole discretion to make this determination, and I'm wondering if something has changed or why this is coming back to the council.
Good point. Why is that?
I'm bringing it back because I believe council usually legislatively has to authorize the sale of town property. And then, once, once the council authorizes the sale of, of town property, then the manager can proceed to sell.
Okay. Any further discussion, and then we can vote on this.
Yes, what indication do we have that this is in fact a property of low value thus warranting less than $10,000?
No, no, it's not warranting less than $10,000. It's, it's low value of less than 35.
35, okay.
We have had our assessor take a look at it, and he's determined that if you add, I have a memo from him, that if you add 1,026 square feet to the existing lot, it creates an additional assessed value of $21,500.
We have to give him permission to do it. He is gonna make the determination that the price is right. Am I correct?
Yes.
Any further comments? Yes.
And there's no use that the town has for this property?
No one has come forward and indicated that they have a use for it, but we'll go around and do a quick survey.
If you look at, if you look at that area, everywhere on that street, that stretch from Washington Avenue to Cutler Street, it's all houses on Shirley Street that have that extra lien in the back, which was the railroad right away. Used apparel and that sort of.
Some of the research that I. We have sold pieces of it. Well, that's what I was gonna point out. Yeah, we have sold other pieces. My, my research into how the town acquired it, so that I could, you know, assess the value of it and things like that, we did determine that there was a release D signed by Mr. McKenna back in 2013 for a piece of this land that was given to, for $1 to congregation Tiferith Israel Winthrop.
So, there's no value to the town?
I really don't see a value based on the fact that the town has already started to carve out pieces. I make a motion, we allow the town manager to send this piece of property, the price he deems is appropriate.
Motion has been named. Do I hear a second?
Okay.
Seconded, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
The ayes have it. Okay. New business, amend Section 17 dash, 17 dot 210D, fees in lieu of parking. I'll let the team motion to refer that to rules and ordinance.
They're cute.
Huh?
They're cute.
You're welcome.
I also would like to see the, the planning board also see this, if that's possible.
Okay. Motion, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to send it to.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, discussion on the motion?
Wait, which motion, because he's making a motion sent to the planning board, and the original motion was sent to the.
He wants it with the planning board as well, so it's both.
So, you want to join?
I don't know if we need to join, while.
You want to join me, you want to go to the planning board first and then come to the board?
Yeah, I'd like to see the planning board, take a look at it first, and then go.
Okay, so what, the motion would be to go to the planning board?
Sure.
That's the motion. Go to the planning board first. Do I hear a second? You still second that?
I'll second that, okay, discussion.
Now with discussion.
Yeah. So, I'm just, I'm just curious with this one, as it relates to one of our previous motions about holding off on making any changes until we have a plan, right? So, I don't know if we're jumping the gun with this one, where the urgency comes from. Is there, is it, is this something that, maybe it's something that we wanna do, but can wait, or is it something that needs to be addressed now, is kind of my question?
There is no urgency, I think, right now. I, I'm, I don't need, I don't believe that we need to have this passed, you know, with any timeline on the end of it. I waited until the, I, this is something that I've been wanting to see addressed for a long time. I waited until the town manager was put in place. Yes, I think I'd like to see a planner, but hopefully, we'll have those, you know, went by the time it's passed, maybe somebody gets a look at it. I, I think that this is something that, you know, along with a lot of things that have to do with the Senate Business District Zone, that needs to be addressed, and I think that it's probably the, procedurally, the best way to do this, piecemeal, one after another, after another. So, I think that after the planning board takes a look at this, maybe, I think we also might need K and P to take a look at this, to make sure that some of the language is correct, and I'm not, the, the motion that I submitted, I'm not married to any of those policy changes. I just think that it's important that we start that conversation about the fees in lieu of parking. This is something that the planning board recommended a couple of months ago when we asked them for, for a, for a recommendation on the Senate Business District, and I think that it's important that we give them an opportunity to make specific recommendations about this and also send it through rules and ordinances, and hopefully, at some point in between, we get a planner in there too. So, but that, that's my intention with this motion, I'm not married to any of the language in it.
Yeah, I mean, I, the, the only concern I have is the idea that the piecemealing it together, there's definitely some things that could use some work, right? And I think that's what the planning board said, and we've recognized that. The question is, if we piecemeal it, do we lose the big vision, right? Do we lose the, the big goal? How many of those moving parts sort of affect one another in the commonwealth? So, that's why I just wanted to make sure that we're, we're not just pushing it to push at this point, that we have a bigger picture of what we're trying to achieve if we're gonna start making changes, so that we don't end up in a situation where we have to backtrack on that later on to try and achieve a larger goal somewhere.
I see your points.
Yeah.
I, I think that should be taken into consideration too, but I think that just starting the conversation for.
Any other discussion?
Are you requesting a recommendation from the planning board, or you just want them to review it?
I'd like them to review it.
Okay.
You know, they can amend it however they see fit, but I, I think that, I'd like to see the ball start getting rolling.
Yeah, all right.
The Senate Business District Bio Law that we have now.
The Senate Business District bylaw that we have now, went to the planning board many times. I mean, they should revisit some of the issues because we've seen some problems that have arisen and they should reissue it. But it was going back to them to review something that they sent to us as is now. So, I mean, what it is, is do you want to review the whole thing or just that?
Just this provision is how I have it written. I think that, you know, to have them review the entire section of the old ordinance code would be a pretty big burden. I think, that my thinking, and I think the council and the certain might disagree, but I think that this is a manageable thing to ask them to straighten out and a manageable thing for the town to look at. This is something that, I think, this particular provision is one that I think just about all parties involved agree needs to be changed. So that's why I brought it up at this time.
Any further discussions?
Just sort of say that I don't, I don't necessarily disagree that it needs to be looked at. I mean, I think it's something that the planning board identified specifically as something that could use some attention, so, you know, that's why I have no problem seconding it because they did identify it as something that they would like to work on, so to get some more input there is, is a good thing.
Any discussion?
Nope.
Take a vote on it. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? The ayes have it. National Grid Resolution.
Mr. President, I move to discharge the National Grid Resolution from the DPW committee that was sent to that committee in the last meeting.
Is that something I can do?
Yeah, you can make a motion to take it out of the committee and vote on it tonight.
Motion has been made to discharge out of the committee, which was to discuss the National Grid Resolution. Do I hear a second?
Second for discussion?
Second for discussion. Discussion on the motion.
Sure, so I think that the reason why we sent this motion to the DPW committee was because we wanted to get some information from National Grid about the, about the situation and the impacts that it might have on the citizens. National Grid returned and said that that was not something that they wanted to do. And I think that also, the other thing that we wanted to do was discuss with Director Calla, who I think I saw in the audience, about some of these impacts. He's right here, I think we have a full committee who could, we could do just that right now if we have any questions about him. So therefore, I think that it's important that we take this up, you know, and not wait another couple of weeks, you know, in order to do that. I think we have everything at, at hand that we want. Anybody who has any questions can ask them now and I think we should vote on it tonight.
Anyone else?
Good.
Is this just the discussion on taking the motion out of the subcommittee or is this the whole discussion?
No, it's a discussion of taking it out of committee.
Yeah, I agree, take it out of committee.
Anyone else wish to be heard?
Senator Phil? I didn't make the issue, I didn't really matter, but I think one of the councils made an issue that if we put a moratorium on and people that were having a problem because of the floods and their houses were being repaired, if we put that moratorium on, is it going to stop those people from repairing their houses and getting back into their houses? Yeah, wasn't my issue, it was an issue someone raised and I think that's why it was sent to committee. And, you know, I thought that was one of the things they were going to look at, because right now, we don't, still don't know if there are those kind of people out there. And if there is, we don't want to hurt our own residents.
Right, and that's why I asked whether or not the resolution was to pull it out of subcommittee to, to ask those questions first and then, or procedurally what we were voting on. Because I think, like Peter said, we have the people here that we could ask the questions to now.
So let's, let's stick to the motion which is taking it out of committee. Any further discussion on the motion to take it out of committee? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? The ayes have it. Now with discussion, if you want to make a motion.
Sure, I would like to make a motion to, and I submitted it in the last, do you want me to read the, the motion?
Yeah, if you have it. Let me see if I have it.
Sure, the motion reads, whereas National Grid services residential and commercial natural gas customers within the town of Winthrop, and whereas the safety and well-being of these customers and that of the general public is contingent upon the high-quality, well-trained employees performing, performing services and line inspections on existing gas services and new gas service projects. And whereas the actions of National Grid and its lockout of high-quality, well-trained gas service workers raise safety concerns for residential and commercial customer as well as the general public. Be it therefore resolved, resolved that the Winthrop Town Council urges National Grid to end the lockout of these employees so that gas line maintenance, inspections, repairs and services may continue to be performed by the most high-quality, well-trained, experienced employees possible. And be it further resolved that the town administration implement heightened scrutiny, increased oversight on all National Grid work being done during the lockout of National Grid workers and that no new permits for gas construction projects shall be issued by the town council. And be it further resolved that this resolution shall not apply to emergency repairs offered this 21st day of August 2018.
Do I hear a second to the council's motion?
Second.
Discussion on the motion.
Well, I think the, the burning question was how many permits do we actually have out and do we anticipate what would require a permit per se, someone who's in the middle of a construction project for a home or someone who's been displaced who's moving back in? While we want to be supportive as possible for this cause, we also don't want to cause pain on the back end for somebody. So, I just want to know what, what the impacts are.
There are several impacts. I'm in total agreement with, with these gentlemen on the licensed water and sewer. And I can't imagine somebody not being licensed and having the expertise to work on those utilities as these folks are talking about gas, which is a very dangerous utility. That said, it, it does raise some questions. There are houses that are under construction in Winthrop right now that are constructed for the use of, of natural gas. So telling these contractors that, well, you built the house, but, you know, you can't get served by gas is, I don't know that we have the authority to do that at this point. Unless we make a, a, a motion going forward that, so these contractors are aware, don't build a house for natural gas, build it for electric, oil or whatever cases. There are no pending new main permits at my office at this time. There are, there are some repair permits that have been requested that I haven't issued the go-ahead on because I kind of wanted to see where the council was going with their decision. On, on an emergency, those are non-emergency leaks. So on an emergency week, they typically don't come to me for a permit before an emergency repair, they'll commit after the fact and pay for the, for the permit. And I don't think that anybody in this room wants us not to address an emergency gas leak. So, those are the questions that my office has, that I have as the one that actually issues these permits to National Grid, is, you know, what we do for new construction. Because like I said, there were three houses, the, the house over on Pleasant Street that we spoke about earlier in public comment, that was a house that was built for gas. And, I mean, that's a, that's a financial burden on somebody that builds a house and then it's a last step of getting the utilities brought into the house. I told them, well, you can't get a permit from National Grid. So that will have definitely a financial impact on somebody. So I can tell you right now, I'm not issuing any new, new main permits, you know, main installations, there's nothing on the books right now, but there are requests for non-emergency gas leak and new installs.
Steve, those people that are building already, they've, they've already asked for permits.
They have, so there's a house being built, no, because those progress requests will come in usually after a fact. There's a house being built on Winthrop Street right now, Farar Builders is building it. The foundation's in, the house is framed, they just came to me to bring in water and sewer. And he raised the concern, he said, well, the house was built, you know, for gas. What is, what's going on with the gas permitting right now? And I didn't have a good answer for him, so, that's, that's one for you, that's a question for you, how do you deal with new installs?
If we pass this motion, they can't do that?
I don't know, that's, that's-
Because it would be a new permit, existing permits?
It would, it would be a, a non-emergency request.
Well, would you, Peter, I, I'm, I'm open to amendments, I'd obviously would want to accommodate any people who, you know, are displaced or anything like that. I, I, you know, this is language that has been passed in other cities and I haven't heard that as an issue. But if, if the council wants to add in language that would accommodate these types of problems that Director Calla has identified, then I'd be open to that.
My information, okay, so.
I just, I want to be as supportive as possible in, in the idea behind this. And I'm wondering whether or not this actually has enough teeth to be as supportive as we'd like to be, right? And balancing out what, what's going on. So is there anything else other communities have done beyond this? I definitely think that we can tighten up the motion because we, we don't want to cause pain on one end and help other people. But I do feel like it also doesn't go the distance of what we're trying to achieve here. Because really what we want to try and achieve is National Grid to bring their workers back.
Right.
And I don't think that this motion as it stands is going to, has any sort of teeth to, to do that.
I think it has teeth if you leave the no new permits in it, quite honestly. The question is, it has teeth if you leave the no new permits, a gas construction project should be issued, that's teeth, you've stopped everything. But the question is whether or not you want to do that, because it's affecting citizens of the town.
Right.
It's affecting contractors, so maybe there's a different way we can approach this. Yes, Steve?
Is it possible to, so this house is under construction right now? And again, maybe the building department gets an indication at the beginning as to how they're going to heat or, or heat their water or, or heat the homes. I don't get that. They come in, the utility request is typically a permit that happens after the building department already issues a, a license to build. But maybe, if you do want to do a no new permits, maybe it's as of, you know, a, a certain month, we can get it in the paper, so at least these contractors are aware. You know, if they take on a new contract that they need to plan to build with oil or electric or, or both, you know, convert over after a fact, if they're not going to get a new install on gas. Doing, you're just saying no, no new permits, there are houses in renovations being done right now that people are plumbing for the use of gas.
Yes.
So, so in, what you're saying is that if we, grant five it in, the people that are already in motion, that have already pulled permits to build, is that what you're saying?
Right, I'm saying, give, you know, at least put it out there that as of a certain time, no new permits will be, will be, you know, issued, you know? Or at least give the building department, you know, some heads up because they're still issuing building permit, the foundation permits.
I think that's why we sent it to the committee to get these answers from the building inspector, getting all this thing. Because I, I believe, you know, we should be doing something in forcing them to end the lockout if the first part of it doesn't. But the second part of it really bothers me that, you know, people that are in the process of, of doing it are going to be stopped from doing it. They're finishing their, their houses and getting back in their houses, are people who are building them under a timeline that they were trying to move in before the holidays and not to be able to do that if we pass this motion. So, as written, I think it can be changed to something different, but it's your motion and I don't, you know, you know, you're looking for the whole follow-up, all right?
But the only thing I, the only thing I can say is that I, I took this language straight from resolutions that have been passed in a lot of other communities and I haven't heard these types of issues. I, it's not to say they don't exist, but like I said before, I'm open to amending this to, to exclude any, any current construction or, and I'm also open to doing it a certain date moving forward. I also wonder if that would fall under some type of emergency provision, if this was something that would, that would be, or maybe we add in, you know, a provision, you know, at the discretion of the, the building inspector or some, or something like that. I think that might be appropriate as well.
Well, Steve, Steve brings up a good point, that the building permit is issued, but the, the actual permit for the gas or whatever utilities comes down the road. So, if we do put in a window, a 30-day window, that as of such and such a date, no permits will be issued based on the actual building permit, not the actual gas permit, if you know what I'm saying.
Yeah. Do you think that 30 days out sounds like a good?
Again, I don't know what's, what permits have been submitted to the building department, a separate department to me. Again, National Grid, what I can tell you is the permits for, for the gas install will come after the house is essentially done, that, you know, they bring the services in. They'll come to me for, you know, water and sewer, they'll rough them in, they need the water for plaster and things like that. The gas service, you know, to heat the house typically, unless they're building a house in Winthrop, comes at the end. So, I think it's a conversation for, you know, Director Leguiz, just asking what he has for pending permits. I would say a, a new gas service is never checked off on a permit application as an emergency. It's, it's, you know, it's, emergency would be a gap, you know, a, a gas leak, substantial gas leak. Even, even a low, a low-grade gas leak is still checked off as non-emergency.
So, just a clarification too, when I say teeth, I think this is about PR, about getting people back to work and I don't want to turn neighbor against neighbor, right? So, you want to have people on, on your side, obviously, and we don't want to hold people up. The other question, as I say, can, can I yield some time to the union representatives to speak here?
Sure.
I'm sorry, I was just going to ask you if we came up with some type of compromise on this to say it starts in 30 days or something like that.
Absolutely, a lot of the cities and towns have written it up, certain ways to accommodate. In most cities and towns in the wintertime have moratoriums already in place that are in fact from December 15th to April 15th.
That's right, no, no emergency work.
No, no emergency work. So again, we don't want to alienate the public, but again, we also raise our concerns with the safety end of it. There is, I believe, we can get to your hands or we put in front of you already, some of the cities and towns that had made some resolutions that you might be able to come up with something that you're not going to alienate the existing builders and possibly something that could- The main installations, obviously, we were hoping for and the new services, like you said, a teeth, but we, the last thing we're looking to do is alienate, like you said, the public also. But there are some cities and towns where they worded on ongoing projects are saying that they had more stringent ways of giving out the permits. So in other words, it would almost give you the power to deem which ones you feel as though gave you enough adequate time to, to give them one, or someone that just popped up and you might have been able to say, no, something, and left it up to the discretion without putting too much pressure on you. But that's what some of the cities and towns have done.
Just want to-
Mr. President, I, I got to make a motion of retaining this to our next meeting so we can come in with proper worded resolution because I, I truly feel as well that, you know, we need to tell National Grid, put people back to work. But we need to have this worded right so that we're not shutting up people that are in the middle of building their houses, so.
I'd just like to ask one more question of the gentleman. What else, we need you to get back to work, right? So what can we do in the sides to pass that motion to help, to help you guys?
Your kind words are awesome and, and the support is, is very good, but ultimately, fighting a multinational billion-dollar corporation, if, you know, we're explaining to people going to cities and towns, they are gambling with the safety. And ultimately, to sway them to just get to the table and try to find some happy medium would be phenomenal. But it seems like the only way you're going to get them is to put, like you said, teeth in there that handcuffs them from new business and new, new main work. And that's why we've asked for that, because it seems like the only way they will actually come to the table, bargain fairly, is by people joining the- to the table, uh, bargain fairly, is by people joining these, yeah, moratoriums.
I just have a question for Paulson. Has this happened before with this type of situation?
And what we got is a lockout of, in 1993 was the last time we had a lockout.
How long did that last, do you know?
That lasted about nine weeks. Um, and the difference in, in most, in 93, almost all the union people, it was almost expected they went management. So in 93, they had a lot of experienced people that were taking care of the emergencies. There was nowhere near the amount of new installation being done at all, very, very, very little. Now they have 25 to 30 crews doing new gas installation, um, and without the proper oversight, that's why the mains are concerned, so it's a big comparison difference, you know, and that's why the result, you know, the moratorium is so important to us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You looking at, rewording it?
Yeah, I'm looking at rewording it, and it, it looks like maybe if we took out the, the words that no new permits for gas construction projects should be issued by the town, uh, maybe just take that no new permits for gas main projects, and that would allow the people who are doing the houses to still do it, and I, I think that we could pass it, so.
I'd accept that amendment.
Would you accept that amendment?
Yeah.
I would make an amendment to the motion that we take out the word construction and put in its place the word mains.
What is it?
Gas main projects.
Gas main?
Main. It already says gas, the only word you change it is construction to main.
How does that change the?
Can you also just re, take the word council out behind town, because it's really the council that doesn't issue?
Oh, it's the government as well.
Issued by the town, yeah. Yeah, take the word council over.
Okay.
So, I'll, I'll make that amendment to, uh.
Amendment has been made, do I have a second on the amendment?
I'll second the amendment.
Okay. Discussion on the amendment.
Go ahead.
I would just like to hear from Steve to make sure that that's, that's, that would be kosher, and, you know, what, if we just change it, the word to main, how does that change the dynamic?
Yeah, a new service does not require a new main install, so it wouldn't, uh, it wouldn't affect new construction unless somebody was trying to develop a cul-de-sac or something like that, need a new extension, there's no rule for cul-de-sacs in this town, so I think you say.
Any further discussion on the motion? Here we're done, I'll take a vote, I'm in favor to say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Discussion on the main motion. Here we're done, I'll take a vote on the main motion. As amended.
Can I, can I just add one, one thing just to keep in the back of it, as a council? As we go forward with infrastructure projects, depending on how long this, this lasts, you're stopping yourselves as well from doing water and soil work, because we wouldn't do a street water and soil work and not replace a gas main at the same time, so, uh, just keep that in mind.
So, and where, council, do we have anything on there?
The, the same project already has all the gas.
Yeah.
So, there, um, and, again, depending on how long this lasts, you know, we're talking about work potentially down on Morton Street, there's old gas down there, so.
How, how soon would that happen, Morton Street?
It would not happen for at least a year.
Okay.
I would suggest let's cross that bridge and we'll get through.
Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Last item on the new business, the town council September meetings, we need to get a motion to change the date?
Yes. I need to make a motion to suspend the rules. Somebody's got to make a motion.
A motion to suspend the rules?
Somebody make a motion to suspend the rules?
I'll make a motion to suspend.
Okay, motion is a dead layer, second, okay. Counselor, you want to change the dates? Does anybody want to make a motion to change, to suspend the rules that the town council usually meets, what, the fourth?
The fourth would have been the fourth.
Would be the fourth.
Right.
Which is election day.
Election day.
Right, we'll move it to the 18th?
The 18th, yeah. Well, there's already.
No, the 18th was original, the, the 11th.
The 18th is original, the 11th, because the town council's doing the public forum.
Oh, that's right, September 11th is the fourth, okay.
So it just canceled.
So we just cancel the meeting?
Canceling meeting, one meeting.
Somebody make a motion to cancel the meeting.
Nobody else? Does somebody want to cancel a meeting? WCAT does.
Yeah.
Who's making the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Goodness.
The guy changed the rules.
I know, public comment. Here we're done, public relations, the new town manager covered a couple, just a refresher, um, the public forum on marijuana is on 9/11, on 9/16, the annual I Love Winter Festival in French Square from 12 to 6 p.m. And also, just a reminder that starting Thursday night, Viking football is back. Member Feas, under the lights at 6 p.m. Um, I'll let the team, a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Good night.